Tori, can you lead us in the pledge when it's time? Okay, let's see. It's not time yet, Dennis. Okay. Welcome to our regular planning commission meeting Tuesday, May 18th. We're gonna have Tori King is going to lead us in the pledge.
I have a little. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I always have a tiny panic attack that I'm gonna forget the words and then my brain just takes over and it's like you said this a billion times, you got this.
Yeah, that's right.
Looks like it was star-spangled banner.
Yeah.
Annette, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King.
Here.
Chairperson Vanda Nykoff.
Here.
So we have six present and one excused absence. Commissioner McIntyre will be absent tonight.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make the motion.
Okay, Jason? In a second.
I'll second.
Tori. Annette, can you do a roll call on that?
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chairperson King.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Chairperson Vanda Nykoff.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. So we'll move into public comment. This is a portion of the meeting that's reserved for persons wanting to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda or which commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Do we have any people in the audience that would like to make a public comment on an issue that is not on our agenda? And if so, please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Not seeing anyone. Just a reminder, if you're watching on Zoom to use the raise hand feature and if you're on the phone, sing star nine will raise your hand. But I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. Very well, then we'll move on to the consent calendar. The only item on there is the approval of the draft minutes. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Tori first and Victoria seconds.
Okay. Tori, you said that Tori was the first star, I missed that. And Victoria, okay, so Vice Chairperson King.
Yes.
And Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Chairperson Vanda Nykoff.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Alright, thank you. It doesn't look like we have any. Planning Commission business or community development staff reports. So we'll move into the public hearings. For each of the following items, the public will be given the opportunity to speak after a small staff report. The chair will open the public hearing and invite the applicant or applicant representative to make any comments. Members of the public will be invited to provide testimony to the commission following the applicant. Speaker should state their name for the record and can address the commission for three minutes. After all public comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will discuss the item and take appropriate actions. So can I get expertise on the first item for the conditional use for ninety eighty-one La Paz Road? We'll start with Dennis.
Don't know if it really qualifies as expertise, but I did look up the parcel on Google Earth and surrounding and the surrounding area.
Yeah, that doesn't count as expertise. Jason?
The expertise.
Okay, Tori?
No expertise.
Randy?
No expertise.
Okay, Victoria?
None.
And then for me as well. So I'll have our staff report. Who's giving the staff report for this one?
That will be me. I'm a little bit nervous about the PowerPoint because it's as it might close on me. So if it closes, I'll reopen it. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. So this is an oversized accessory structure conditional use permit at ninety eighty-one La Paz. The parcel itself is two point eight seven acres in the residential zoning district surrounded by other residential suburban parcels. So here we can see an aerial view. There is a small existing residence there and then I have outlined where the new proposed structure is to be located. A little bit of background about this property. The property was originally part of a larger property that backed up to San Diego Road. Prior to the subdivision of the property, this residence was actually an accessory dwelling unit and then after the final map recorded and this became its own property, this residence became the primary unit on this property. So that explains the small size. It's only about seven hundred forty square feet on almost three acre parcel. The project being proposed is a new twenty-two hundred square foot metal structure that the applicants intending to use as a workshop for storage since the how a workshop and for storage since the house itself is so small. Part of the project is to extend the driveway to this new structure and the only utilities are water for the what the fire sprinklers and then electricity. So the reason this is coming before the planning commission is that the current code states that accessory structures over fifty percent of the floor area of the primary structure do require a conditional use permit. This is obviously larger than the primary structure, which is why it is requiring the CUP. So here we can see a site plan. The top again is that existing structure and you can see where the new structure is to be located and then in that little cloud area. The applicant does intend to eventually build a larger residence to where the existing residence will become the accessory dwelling unit. Oh. Okay, it happened. I'm sorry. Let me open it back up. Okay, sorry about that. Moving on to the design and scale of the project, the height is proposed to be twelve feet tall at the eaves and seventeen feet tall at the peak. They are proposing a four foot tall wainscoting around the bottom. This would be a dark correct dark gray and then a lighter gray would be on the upper eight feet. The roof and doors would also be a light gray with a dark gray trim and then they're proposing to add two cupolas to make it look a little bit less commercial and more residential. So here are some rough renderings. You can see the it's basically just a metal structure. The the top picture you see there is what you would see from Lulu's and the applicant has informed me that those windows are to be the same size as the windows on the other side. And then you can see the colors proposed at the top that dark gray would be that wainscoting around the bottom as well as the trim and then that lighter gray would be the top of the building and the roof. And then there's just some windows on the rear elevation there. I just wanted to show an example of a structure that would be similar because those renderings are a little hard to imagine. So you can see that wainscoting around the bottom with the darker color and then there's a darker trim and then this even has a little cupola and applicants proposing to have two similar to that. So moving on to landscaping and screening, there are some existing trees on La Paz Road that would provide a little bit of screening for the structure. However, due to the location and the proximity to the street and the elevation change, it's a little bit higher. Staff is we've added a condition to propose that they add a little bit more landscaping. So the condition states that they submit a landscape and irrigation plan with their building permits of middle. This condition also includes that these be native and drought tolerant species. And then we've listed a couple of species such as manzanitas, sea anothus and a minimum of one flannel bush since these are good screening vegetation. So here's that site plan again. The bottom there, the only new note is these are the areas that staff is looking for the applicant to add a little bit more screening to screen from La Paz. So here's a site photo. The circle is obviously showing about where the structure would be located. And here's a couple more pictures. This top one is looking as you're driving toward the end of La Paz. It is a dead end at the road. There's only a couple of parcels actually after this one. And then the bottom picture there is a view of the site as you're driving back on La Paz back toward town. So here's a better picture of that building site. You can see there's not really any vegetation and it's relatively flat, but there is a little slope to it. So the conditions of approval basically just ensure that the applicant that the structure is gonna look the way that the applicant has proposed it with that wainscoting, the colors and then the cupolas and that those windows match the windows on the other side. And then again, that landscape and irrigation condition to make sure that we have some screening. Project qualifies for a class three categorical exemption from SEQA because it's a construction of a new small structure. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the draft resolution approving conditional use permit use twenty-one dash zero zero three four. I'm sorry, I don't know why this is happening. That's frustrating. Warned me too. Okay.
It's fine. You don't need to bring it back up. I think I think.
Okay.
Eventually, but I think you gave the recommendation. We have the everything out there. And if they want to see images, we can bring it back up in a minute, but.
Okay, yeah, the recommendation is there and then the only slide, just to be aware that the commission can approve modifications. You can determine that more information is needed and refer the item back to staff or you can deny the permit. And that's it. Staff's available for questions.
Mariah, great recovery on two crashes on that technical side.
I need to talk to Luke about that.
Yeah, sorry, but you you blended it right in just fine. I would have been just fumbling there for a while. So good job.
Thank you, Mariah. Great job. Okay, do we have any planning commissioners that would like to ask staffing questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
This this new proposed house that will take place in the future. That would make that house a requirement to be forty-four hundred square feet to make this this unit half the size. Is that in the plans? Because that's a pretty big house.
Yeah, I don't think so. The applicant hasn't exactly specified the size, but regardless, I would imagine, and I think that they're on that in the future, the house, you know, it probably would have triggered this use permit. We did just update our code, of course, in our last meeting where a project like this, it would have triggered a lower use permit. It would probably be an administrative use permit, which is a director level. So it's likely that it would have still triggered a use permit in the future, but but yeah, I'm not exactly sure what the size is being proposed for.
But they, yeah, they're not going to be mandated to build a larger house. They'll be able to build any size house they want to. Not being constrained by the accessory structure size. Since they're getting this use permit for this now. The house size won't be constrained in the future.
But if they were, if they were, if it were flipped, if the house was built first, under the old rules, it would have to be fifty percent of the main dwelling. But now that you've changed that, it would be, I think it went to a hundred percent.
That's right. Went to a hundred percent. That's still yet to go to city council. That's scheduled to go to city council next Tuesday, a week from today and.
And actually, any structure between that fifty percent and a hundred percent has to meet different criteria. And I think one of them is that the accessory structure needs to be located behind the primary structure. So this still would have triggered a use permit.
Okay, and as far as you know, there's currently no objections to it from neighbors or anybody else.
We haven't received any public comment unless there are neighbors wanting to speak tonight.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Dennis, did you have your hand raised? Go ahead, Dennis.
Oh, I was gonna let Tori go.
Well, you can go first.
Okay. I didn't see on the exhibits, the location of the new road to the structure. I see it there. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's just gonna be like a decomposed granite kind of bait.
I had the same question as Jason did about the future and about forty-four hundred square feet and whether the use permit would carry over to that or not. But and I'm always kind of concerned about conditional use permits, especially when it comes to landscaping and I can walk down El Camino Real and look at a zillion projects that have had commercial use permits and the landscaping isn't up kept and it's gone pot and just looks like crap. And so with this use permit, I mean, I would like to see the owner applicant maintain the landscaping, but I mean, what happens if it starts dying back or we're gonna be able to enforce the conditions that the landscaping be retained or is that kind of on a as call basis in which code enforcement has to be called to say, hey, this guy is not or this person isn't maintaining their landscaping. They have a conditionally use permit. Do something about it.
How's that? Basically, in that kind of scenario, we are complaint based. We're not proactive. So we're not going to come out here and monitor this property over the years to see how they're doing and continue to knock on their door. It's just not how this works, but if there it was to be a condition that says that their landscaping has to be maintained in a healthy and thriving manner, for example, specifically if it's landscaping for the mitigation of the view set of this structure. And then for some reason or another, someone decided further down the line to take all that landscaping out and a neighbor complained about that, we would be able to follow up with code enforcement and say, hey, you agreed to a condition on your use permit. You need to restore that. So it is something we could go and use enforcement to do that if you did have a condition. But we wouldn't be proactive about doing that unless there was a substantial issue. And I gotta admit, those issues are very difficult and challenging to enforce. There's a lot of you know, a lot of these that are throughout the city, you're right, and there's a lot of properties to monitor and the idea is it's kind of an honor system. We hope that if they're proposing to do a certain plan, they're proposing to do a certain landscape that they are going to have pride in their property and understand the protection of you shed and they're gonna maintain that on their own. Because it's really for the value of their own property and for the aesthetics of all the properties around them. So that's typically how we like to work with that.
Yeah.
Just using our tail everywhere.
Yeah, just to add Phil, there are also these trees at the bottom here, these little circles that you see at the bottom right hand corner. These are fruit trees. So there is actually already irrigation going that way. I'm not sure if the applicant would need to add a little bit more, but that's why we're also requiring that landscape and irrigation plan to make sure that at least they're putting in some irrigation to hopefully make it survive.
I guess I'm confused if it's not a condition. Then why are we requiring it to be done? It's just, it's like a, we wish for this to happen. And we think it would be nice, but we're not gonna condition it. So you can put it in and let it go and nothing will be done.
So let me just clarify that issue. When someone submits a plan and we approve that plan through a conditional use permit, that plan becomes part of that conditional use permit and is part of the quote unquote contract they make with the city. And that's what they're going to do and that's what they're going to build. Sometimes it can help solidify it if it's put into a written condition. But the plan by itself, once a conditional use permits approved and they've submitted that plan, that is essentially part of what they're required to keep and maintain. If they do something different than that, then they need to come and either get us a different approval process for that. Or at least contact us and tell us they're going a different direction to make sure we can determine that what they're doing is in substantial conformance with what they had approved. But yeah, you're right. You can put it in writing in condition, but you can also have the faith and trust and respect that if they submit a plan, that's what they're going to do.
It just seems like we've put a lot of faith and a lot of trust in a lot of areas and that has some penciled out. Again, I, I, I can just count numbers of properties in which I know conditional use permits were required. And I know that landscaping was a requirement of that for screening reasons and for other reasons for removing native trees. And the landscaping hasn't been maintained. The replacement trees have been allowed to die and they're there. And so there, I mean, that's maybe a history of our city that that's what we allow to happen. And then I wanna just kind of the one photograph that you showed that was from La Paz Road and you made a mention that it was fairly flat. I'll maintain that's more than ten percent. And so if it is, is there gonna be a precise plan?
So precise plans are triggered when you move more than fifty cubic yards on slopes over twenty percent. So it wouldn't be triggered.
Okay.
Tori?
Yeah, I I had a question about the picture of the the metal building with Wayne's coating and a cupola, cupola. Thank you for that because I was like, what the heck is a cupola? So thank you for. Is it going to be a metal building? Cause I didn't, either I missed it or I just didn't see that it was in there. But is it going to be a metal building painted? Is that the idea? With a metal roof?
It is a metal building. Phil can probably correct me, but I think you build these in the color. I don't think they're painted.
Yes, they're they're, when they bring out these materials, the materials are, if they're a metal building, the materials are powder coated or finished in a color that they deliver and they install it like that. You can't paint them and sometimes they are painted after the fact. But it's much more reliable when you have a factory finish on there that comes pre-installed. And that's typically how these are done from these companies that install these buildings.
Sure. And is it gonna look like that where it looks like siding or is it gonna look more like the other rendering where it looks more like corrugated? Or maybe that's a better question for the.
Yeah, I think the applicant can clarify that.
Okay. And I have a question. My question is for him then or her.
Okay. Okay, Victoria?
Yeah, and this also might be better suited for the applicant, but mine's around just noise pollution and it wasn't clear to me from the site design or the pictures and I really had it on my agenda to go drive by today and I did not get the chance to. But looking at the neighbors and I get that it's a rule, yeah, the the one house looks very close, but I'm, yeah, I'm just wondering as far as if there's gonna be any kind of soundproofing required and whatnot, because it does look like it will be a workshop, water, electricity, that kind of thing.
Um, no, typically we don't really require sound measures in these kind of structures. I I don't know if that's a concern out here. These are pretty big properties.
Yeah, we don't, we don't put sound mitigation on these kinds of things in a residential property. If it was a commercial zone property and we knew they were doing a specific business in there, there'd be requirements to buffer that noise against a residential zone, but in a residential property, even if they're building a workshop, it's up to the neighbors self-respect to respect each other's noise issues and the building itself would not trigger that kind of mitigation. But if someone has a noise issue all the time and the neighbors are concerned about it, that is something that we would have to go out and practically enforce and and regulate the hours in which they are doing noise in there. I'm glad that my neighbors haven't complained about me.
Sure, yeah, and it's kind of a self-management thing, I would think, in more rural properties and I can definitely relate growing up in a similar setting. And then the other thing was around just light and just the exterior lighting. So I'll, I'll ask the applicant about that too.
Yeah, I don't believe there were exterior lights on the plans, but they can clarify that.
Okay, I could see flood lighting being something they add on later, like a solar big thing. So it just becomes a, yeah, a complication for in rural areas. So. All right, thanks.
Jason?
Well, typically, I don't know who would answer this question, but typically on a lot like this, the residence is usually towards the street and any workshops or anything or towards the back. Was there a reason that that wasn't requested first? Does anybody know the history on that? Because as you drive down La Paz in the future, you're gonna see these residents built. I just would think that if you're driving down the road and you see this industrial building, it's gonna look like an industrial zone.
Yeah, you know, I did ask the applicant, you know, do you, do you want to move it back? We prefer if you moved it back and I think they really wanted that spot in the back for the the residence. After that, it does get a little bit hilly. So that area is really the best place for building, but I don't know the specifics on why, why they really want to have their house back there.
Yeah, that was, that was actually one of my comments as well, but I, but I, I think there's a creek or something between, wasn't this part of the San Diego project?
Yes.
Originally, okay, so it was split off the San Diego parcel. That was a long thin one with between the two streets, right? I seem to remember this one. Yeah, and there was like a valley on the other side. So it might provide a lot better view for a new residence in the back.
That makes sense.
Okay, any other questions of staff?
Randy?
Randy?
Yeah, question for staff. I know that he plans on making this a workshop. Did he mention like what type of work he does?
No, he didn't really elaborate on the workshop. I'm sure he could talk about it more today. The, I think the emphasis was really on the storage because the house is so small.
Okay, yeah, I just, I mean, cause if he's doing something where he's building heavy equipment or something, I can completely understand why he might want it all closer on the front of the property. But just trying to make some logic of it, but okay.
Okay, Dennis? Dennis?
Um, last question. What was the front setback? Was it twenty-five or forty?
The the front setback that they're proposing is forty feet.
That's forty feet. How much is the, how much easement is there for La Paz? So it's twenty feet from the center to the right of way La Paz and then another forty feet from the right of way to the building. So essentially sixty feet from the center of the road or from the property line?
Um, you know, I think it's actually forty feet from the pavement. I'm not entirely sure where the La Paz, how big the right of way is, but I know I clarified with the applicant, it's forty feet from the actual street.
From the edge of pavement or from the center of the easement?
The edge of the pavement.
That road is not paved. It's just a dirt road.
The dirt.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
The road part, yeah.
So would the easement be, in reality, the easement is measured from the whatever width of the road is, let's say it's twenty feet. So it's a forty foot road, twenty on each side. The setback would be measured from the twenty foot mark then. And not from the, I mean, that's what a front setback is. It's measured from the, you know, the right of way.
From the property line.
And not the edge of the, well, the property line again is in the middle of the road. So you subtract out the easement and then what's left over is the setback length from that to the building. So it's something less than forty, but not.
It looks like it's forty feet from the right of way line.
Yeah, that's what they're showing.
Huh? I'm trying to read that on the corner of that building. Looks like there's a distance written there.
What's the hatched out section?
On the right, right where the left of that arrow right there, there's a dimension.
Yeah, but Mariah, what is the hatched out section?
The hashed out section, I believe. The applicant can probably elaborate a little bit more on this, but. The hashed out section, I believe, um, the applicant can probably elaborate a little bit more on this, but I think, uh, they told me it was some kind of utility easement or something. Um, so that I think is fifteen feet. And then the building is twenty-five feet off of that.
Okay.
And that's not gonna be a problem for the native shrubs in that utility easement? Just, just wondering. Doesn't seem like it, cause it'll be shallow, but.
Yeah, no, I don't think it'll affect them at all.
Okay, no eight-one-one's emergency, okay.
Okay, um. If there are no additional questions, we will open it up for, um, a public hearing. And we'll invite our applicant, if they are online, to, um, speak to us and we can ask some questions. And then we'll bring other people in.
Okay, um, the applicant's name is Chris. I don't see your name on the Zoom meeting, but if you're on the phone, if you could press star nine, I'll let you speak. There he is.
Does he have to do something to mute himself?
He might have to press star six to unmute.
Hello?
Hello, you're on. You're on with the planning commission.
Outstanding. What can we answer for you?
Frank or Jason, did you have a question for the applicant?
Uh, basically the same question I asked earlier is, um, was there a reason that you wanted the, uh, storage area in towards the street versus the future house?
Uh, it just comes down to the shape of the property. That particular area is really flat. And the area where the future house is, is flat. Everything else is super hilly, so to build on that would be incredibly impractical. Plus, we kinda like the native and we don't wanna mess with that.
Okay, yeah, it's your property. You gotta be happy with it.
Yeah, it's so pretty up there.
Um, any other planning commissioners that would like to ask a question of the applicant? Okay, Tori.
Um, I, I don't know if you can see the pictures, but what kind of metal is gonna be on the side? Is it gonna be like, um, powder coated corrugated metal? Or more like, look like siding for a house?
Uh, I know it's a standard PBR panel, so it is powder coated, so it's got a no rest twenty-five year guarantee on it. Um, as far as the actual texture, I honestly don't know.
It's gonna be the same as the picture provided in the plan.
Yeah, it's the, whatever that picture is that Mariah put in there, I don't have the exact paperwork in front of me, is pretty close to what it's gonna look like.
Okay, that's perfect. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah, not the green and yellow things. That was a, a draft the manufacturer came up with when they were designing it.
Oh, good, cause that green's hideous.
Yes.
The colors are the light gray and the dark gray and it will include the Wayne's coating and the cupola as well.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions of the applicants?
Yes, Jeff.
Yeah, Victoria.
Yeah, the question I have for the applicants is around just any exterior lighting and what you may be, uh, wanting to do on the outside there for light.
Uh, the current house just has kind of like a, for lack of a better word, a jelly jar where it's just got a little light above the door. So we wanna get matching lights for the two doors. And that's pretty much all we have planned. And it's really primarily for storage, so I don't really envision ever having to work there late at night or need giant floodlights. It's not something I wanna do to our neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was just definitely a concern from a citizen standpoint, so thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Plus, it is a dead-end street, so there's only like three or four houses past us too. It's not super highly trafficked.
Yeah, well, I guess you could be speaking for, I mean, I could be speaking for a neighbor or I could be, uh, that's, that's human or non-human, uh, since there's a lot of wildlife out in rural zones, so.
Right.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Glad we could be a part of this.
Um, are there any other people on the line that would like to speak on this project? If, if, if so, please raise your hand and zoom or press star nine on your phones to raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any additional hands raised from there. Okay, thank you. Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any deliberation or, um, emotion.
Um, I'll make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation to accept the CUP as um, written.
I'll say.
Secondly, Randy. And then can we have a roll call in this, please? And you're muted.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Yes.
Chairperson Ben and Ica?
Yes.
Um, can I just ask if that does include the additional landscaping for staff's request?
Uh, yes, and.
Yes, and that, that's in, um, that's in the draft resolution, so I.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so motion passes six zero.
Thank you, and congratulations to the applicant. We'll be looking forward to seeing that building permit coming to the city. Okay, then we'll move on to item number two in our public hearing, um, conditionally used permit for fifty seventy-five Casco Bell Road. And we'll start with any expertise on this and, uh, we did receive some emails that we'll have read into the record during public comment. But, um, any expertise besides those items? And we'll start with Jason?
No, no expertise.
Tori?
No expertise.
Victoria?
None.
Randy?
No expertise.
Dennis?
No expertise.
And none for me. So we'll go to, uh, staff and have our staff report on this item. John, are you doing this one?
Uh, yes, I will be doing this one. Thank you. Let me just share my screen. All right, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
All right. So this project is for fifty seventy-five Casco Bell Road. Um, it is a conditional use permit to allow for multiple accessory structures on a residential parcel. Uh, the project number is use twenty-one zero zero three, three, five. So this is the project location at fifty seventy-five Casco Bell, southern west of Tascadero. Um, you see the location of the existing residence, uh, that is a typo. It's not three, 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 five Chico. It's fifty seventy-five Casco Bell, sorry about that. And then outlined in yellow is the proposed location of the accessory structures. Um, that will be covered under this use permit. Um, the one structure you see there that is currently existing is, uh, what the Tuscan Municipal Code calls, um, agricultural accessory structure and what our staff report calls a equine structure as it, uh, contains horses. This is the project zoning, um, it's residential suburban and it's surrounded primarily by residential suburban properties. So as I mentioned, um, existing on site is a single-family residence of approximately three thousand two hundred two hundred and forty-one square feet, an accessory dwelling unit of approximately two hundred and eighty-eight square feet. And that does not include a deck, um, a pool trellis structure that has solar panels on it. That is also two hundred and eighty-eight square feet. And then a recently built agricultural accessory structure, equine shelter. Um, that is, I think, is approximately five hundred and seventy-six square feet. Um, and that is unpermitted as the property owners, uh, were not aware that they needed permits for such a structure. Uh, so the intent of this use permit, um, is to allow for two additional uh, accessory structures and, and then also the conversion of that recently built agricultural accessory structure into an accessory storage structure. So under the use permit, there are three phases proposed. As I mentioned, phase one is to convert the existing five hundred and seventy-six square foot animal shelter into a storage structure. Uh, this is proposed to happen um, if the use permit is approved. Uh, phase two is to construct a new and similarly sized, uh, animal enclosure in compliance with the agricultural building setbacks. The Tuscan Municipal Code requires a twenty-five foot setback for agricultural buildings. Um, so that current structure does not meet these setback standards. Um, in this phase two is proposed to be carried out within the next year. And phase three is to construct a new detached workshop, uh, and that is within five years. So this is the site plan, uh, for the minor use permit. I lined in red, you see the proposed structures. Um, it's a little hard to read. Um, as the text is a bit small, but phase is one, as I mentioned, is that existing agricultural building that will be converted into, uh, as-built storage accessory structure. Phase two is a new agricultural accessory structure or equine shelter. That'll be the same size at five hundred and seventy-six square feet. And will meet, uh, the agricultural accessory structure setback standards of twenty-five feet. And phase three, um, is the new workshop, which it currently is proposed to be approximately nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet. Um, but the applicant has not yet submitted plans for this structure. There was a mistake on this site plan. Um, the existing patio cabana is actually where that red line is pointed to. Uh, the site plan that was submitted indicated that it was the, uh, the deck covering attached to the house, but that is not correct. It's actually that detached padat- patio cabana. And that, as I mentioned, contains some solar panels to heat the pool. And there is an existing two hundred and eighty-eight single-family residence, as it says on the site plan, but what we call an accessory dwelling unit. And then the existing primary dwelling. Also, you can see the proposed ten-foot, uh, DG access to the accessory structure area and the DG, um, surrounding the accessory structures. These are the proposed elevations of what is the existing agricultural structure or equine shelter. As you can see, it's open on most sides, um, in approximately twenty-four feet long. And then, uh, phase two, as I mentioned, will be the new agricultural accessory structure. So that photo on the right, you see the existing agricultural structure that will be converted to residential storage in the same building footprint, and then the new agricultural accessory structure. Uh, that will be at a minimum twenty-five feet setback from the side property line as required by the Tuscan Municipal Code. Here's some additional proposed structure detail. This is just an example of what the proposed metal workshop will be. Uh, as a reminder, the applicant has not yet submitted, um, permit plans, building permit plans for these structures. Um, so this is an example of what the workshop could be, and that is phase three of this project. Um, it's the typical pre-manufactured accessory workshop that we see throughout the city. Then on the left is the proposed, uh, structure post covers for the equine shelters. Here are a few site photos of what is existing on the property. On top is the existing pool trellis, uh, with the solar panels on top. And down below is, uh, a view of the property from Casco Bell Road looking towards the rear of the property and the existing agricultural accessory structure. So the applicant is proposing to paint the exterior of the new equine shelter to be similar to the existing shelter on site. The pre-manufactured accessory storage or phase three is proposed to have a metal exterior paneling with brown trim and a brown roof, not a ceiling. And staff considers these structures to be compatible with the pattern of development in the area. Uh, the majority of the adjacent lots are quite large. Um, and accessory structures, um, are quite common throughout the area. The current municipal code, uh, allows for up to two accessory structures in residential areas as an accessory use, uh, to exceed the, the two structures, uh, you have to obtain the minor use permit. So in summary, this minor use permit is, um, helping the applicant meet, uh, the agricultural accessory code setback of twenty-five feet, while also allowing for one additional accessory structure on site. Uh, and that's not counting the existing pool trellis structure, um, or the accessory dwelling unit. These are the conditionally experiment findings. I won't go through these, um, as these are in the staff report in the proposed resolution, uh, but staff has deemed that the findings can be met for this project. Uh, the project is exempt from CEQA as it is an accessory structure and will not require any grading on slopes over twenty percent. So staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt draft resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow for more than two accessory structures on a residential property, subject to financing conditions of approval. And the majority of the conditions of approval are just to ensure that the project meets, uh, all the code requirements for accessory structures and for access, and then also has the phased um, project phases, um, over the conditional use permit process and then also for the five years, uh, to submit a building permits for the additional accessory storage structure or workshop. And these, uh, conditions are in your staff report. Currently, the commission may have pre-modifications to the project. Uh, the commission may determine that more information is needed and refer the item back to staff and the commission may deny the permit. And I believe we have, uh, the applicant on the phone as well, and we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, okay, we'll start out with asking questions of staff. Um, Dennis?
Um, so to clarify for me, um, the existing structure that's unpermitted is, needs to be twenty-five feet from the side, from any setback, from any front, side, bit, rear property line, correct?
Correct, it's twenty-five feet from the side setback. And I believe fifty feet from the front property line.
Okay, so then when it's converted into an accessory storage structure, the, what would this, what is the typical setback in the zone? Then at five feet or?
The minimum setback required by the code is five feet, um, and it's approximately eight feet from the side property line.
Okay, so as far as they're, um, I'm a little confused about your condition for that talks about the phasing of the project. And, uh, you stayed in there that, uh, permits must be sought for phase one and phase two within twenty-four months. But yet you categorize phase one as being immediate. Um, why is phase one have twenty-four months to apply for a building permit then?
So the conditional use permits are valid for twenty-four months, um. The immediate language was just applying to that would be the first phase of the project, not so much that they're required to uh do that immediately as this is correcting uh non-conforming issues on site. We would like to see these permits come across soon as possible.
It makes sense though about the twenty four months. Thank you for clarifying that. Well, thank you.
Any other questions? For staff?
Go ahead.
Jason, did you?
Okay, um, yeah, I had a had a question about the the proximity to the neighbor on the uh, it's the equine structure, the larger structure that that stuff, the one uh in the red square.
So the uh side, the larger structure is phase three. That's the workshop.
That's the workshop. Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify that that and was there any particular reason why we want to turn, you know, put a conditional use permit on something five years out?
I think the applicant is not yet ready to build that, but but would like to build that in the future. Um, so just wanted to permit this under one uh use permit.
Two birds kind of thing?
Yeah, but I think uh they can clarify that if they're on the call as well.
Okay. Okay.
The um, the reason why the workshop is nine ninety nine square feet is to avoid fire sprinklers.
That sounds about right.
Is there a requirement for building setbacks from property lines not to have fire sprinklers? And then is there another setback requirement between buildings to avoid set uh fire sprinklers?
Yeah, as far as I know, the the setback, the interior setback between buildings is five feet and that's required by the cuff when the building cut.
But they have no one hour fire rating then? To be at five feet.
If they need that setback.
If they're closer than five feet, they're gonna have to have the one hour rating. If they're on site, so. Yeah, we don't have anyone from fire here tonight to get too technical on the sprinkler issues, but um I think our fire staff had reviewed this proposal and everything's fine the way it's proposed.
If uh within the period of the uh life of the conditionally used permits, now we're talking about applications for building permits within the specified periods of time. So if standards change, let's say uh, something happens that says you need to have fire sprinklers on the workshop because it's uh too close to the side property line. Then those new standards would uh take uh be in effect because it's a building permit and there would be no carryover.
Yeah.
And no carryover from the conditionally used permit.
That's right. So you're talking about vesting rights there. Basically, the date upon which they submit a construction, a complete construction permit application is the date in which they vest their um California building code uh construction permit. We update our building code or the state does just about every two years. Um, and so um, right now we're on the twenty nineteen building code. And that'll be, that'll probably keep us going until the end of next year or so. So they submit during that cycle, they'll be on that building code. If they submit after that particular date when we adopt the next building code, they'll be on that building code. And you're right, the building code in fire code, which gets adopted with it, could come up with different criteria that potentially could change a design or what what's happening on this site in terms of fire sprinklers or setbacks. Not likely, but it could.
Thank you.
So do we have to approve all three phases right now or could we approve the the conditional use permit for say just phase one and phase two and have them come back for phase three?
You know, you can do whatever you would like as a.
Oh, don't, don't tell me that, Phil. Okay.
So, well, I should say whatever you like because um you're probably gonna have a frustrated applicant and
Yes.
maybe a frustrated neighborhood. They did submit an application uh that they felt was achievable. And they do have a staff recommendation that's achievable, but certainly you can look at the phases and say, hey, you know, if the third phase is is more than the two year, two years out, which is the life of the conditional use permit, um, perhaps you should come back and look at that at a later date or at least go to the design review committee um, with that particular portion at a later date. Those are the kind of things you can uh reasonably uh condition of this project. I would definitely ask that you have the applicant weigh in on any of these topics that you um desire to put into conditions and also hear from the neighborhood too as well on on any of these topics. Uh, they would have to pay for a new application if that's the case, so you are putting a little bit of a financial burden onto them if they do that. So keep that in mind as well.
How much is an application fee?
What are these going for, John? For a minor conditionally used permit? Three thousand? Is it four thousand? Quite a bit.
Four hundred, it's about twelve hundred for major.
Twelve hundred for minor, okay, sorry.
Okay.
I'm thinking of the major conditional use permit. Um, which is a big site, like, you know, when you look at a big Dove Creek type project or Del Rio Ranch type project.
Got it. Um, and then one other question, uh, is it possible to fit some like border trees between that big building and the fence because it seems from the photos and stuff that it's very close to the house. And also reading the the letter from the the people who live in that property to the north. It just seems like having a big steel building out your window might not be the prettiest thing ever. So is it possible to require some kind of landscaping between that big workshop and the property line?
Possibly, um. Yeah, it's, John, do you know more about that and whether there's space in there? And I guess the other question would be, is there horses that graze the entire property? It might make it really challenging, but um.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's a, it's about a five foot setback um proposed um for that workshop structure. Um, I mean, that's just required by the code that it is quite narrow.
That's pretty close. It's pretty tight. There are some landscape species that can fit in that. But then you get a difficulty with maintaining the side of the building and you get conflicts with that and then you get fire hazard issues.
Now, where where it says six feet and those two little arrows, is that between the property line and the northern building?
Yeah, that's, that's what it appears to be. I think.
So there would be like a total of eleven feet between those two. Okay, and then thirty seven feet. Okay, I see that now. Okay.
Yes, so the section is a little tricky to read.
All right, um, any other questions from? I have a question for staff. Is it unusual to have have a minor conditionally used permit that goes out for five years?
That is unusual. Um, and we probably should talk about that because the typical life of a conditionally used permit for our code does have a a set life, but the commission does have discretion to add to that under this process and allow them to come in later for that. And they can also come in and apply for an extension. So that is a valid, I think a valid discussion now, and I think we should talk about that. A lot of things do change over over several years, the conditions on the site, the code, the general plan is gonna change in that amount of time. And the commission and city council will change in that amount of time. So um, it's not an incredibly long time. It's not a very unreasonable, but it's a good discussion topic.
The only question I had, Jeffrey, are you complete or you have another? Okay, um, I'll ask the applicant the same thing, but from the city staff level, was there any talk of why the workshop building was seated right there by the neighbors? Uh, five feet back on the fence line or is there other alternates that were talked about?
Um, I'm not sure if the applicant considered other options, but that does meet the code requirements of that five foot setback and I do know the majority of the the rear portion of the side is extremely um steep. So it'd be more difficult to build it elsewhere. Um, and I think they just wanted to kind of, it seemed uh, they just wanted to cluster the buildings together to have that one access to all three buildings.
Okay.
I can let the applicant speak more to that.
Yeah, it seems like whether it's built in a year or three years or five years, it's still not gonna be something that the neighbors would appreciate. Um, and then the other, um, I guess thing to bring up as far as um the fence, I I wasn't sure, what is the fence currently? Is that a um open see-through fence or is it a a wooden fence?
So it looks like from what um the site photos show, it looks to be a just the see-through pole fence. Both on the front setback and that side setback. You can see in the bottom photo here.
Actually, we can't see photos.
I was like scrolling and like where?
I thought I was still sharing my screen. I'll do that now.
I could just see your awesome earmuffs.
Yeah, from the street, Google street view, it looks like it's part of wire along that property line.
Okay, thanks.
Jason.
Hey, would staff be adverse to um to uh, an approval of this, but with the uh the phase three limited to a two-year condition and then uh option to renew or option to extend later that way, uh, we don't, I I always hate it when uh, staff has given something that's out of the ordinary. So they kind of like to have put a little tag on it and go they they're all like this except for this one, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
More helpful to you guys?
Yeah, there's no, there's no issue. I think we're totally on the fence with that. That's entirely discretionary to the commission. I think um I think I might have mentioned before, we should hear from the applicant and neighborhood. Um the one thing to focus back on in this particular project, um, it's it's really the number of structures that's triggered this use permit. For example, the size of the workshop doesn't trigger an exception. It's really just the number uh on this particular application. But certainly you can shorten the time period of the phasing, uh, that's certainly within your purview. And um whether that's two years or three years or what have you, if you feel uncomfortable at five years, it's a long time out and they should come back and ask for an extension to their conditional use permit, uh, which can be done. They can get an extension uh pretty simply. Yeah, what's the cost of it is, what's the cost of an extension, John or Kelly? Remind me of that. Is it, it might even be similar to the use permit unfortunately.
Yeah, I feel like it's about the same. Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to put a financial burden on the applicant, but I also don't wanna um, you know, put a time restraint on them as well. Five years just seems like a long time, you know?
Yeah, it's a way.
It's nice to know that what they had planned though. That's always good.
So um so the pool structure, that's considered an accessory structure, even though it really, does it house anything besides just the solar panels or is it is it like a cabana or something or?
Yeah, so it is uh kind of a pool cabana with those solar panels on top. And yeah, it had an existing use uh building permit already, so that's been there for some time.
That that counts as one of the access accessory structures and
Yeah.
But we're, we're looking at adding three additional. And they're they're permitted to have two total, right? So even the um the shop, if they didn't have these ag buildings, the shop could go in and they it wouldn't even come to us, right?
That's right.
So really, what's the only thing that's triggering it is the location of this uh is the number, of course, but because of the location of those those uh accessory structures. So so the conversion of the um the equine structure, is that gonna, is that gonna be enclosed then for storage or is it gonna be left open?
Uh, they're proposing to enclose it for storage. So it'll be more like a pre-manufactured storage unit, but on the same building footprint as the equine structure.
Dennis.
It's interesting though that the combined, the four structures are less than the fifty percent requirement that uh we were dealing with in the last turn. And because the the primary in this is is pretty large, it was a three thousand plus square feet. But uh, when you add up the four buildings, you're still less than fifty percent of that three thousand plus.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Go ahead and open it for um hopefully open the public hearing will invite the applicant to um address us, maybe answer any of the questions we might have, so.
Looks like we have uh one person with their raised hand, so I'll let them talk.
Just a reminder to press star six to unmute.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm here. Uh, I I wrote a couple of notes down to possibly answer some questions that you might have. Uh, the fence material, it's a pipe fencing with a no climb. Um, one of the other questions was the workshop location. That location uh where we had put it, it provides the best access also to get to the other two structures. And also to the north of it is our neighbor has a shed. So it would primarily be blocked by that shed partially and then the front side of her house is a garage. And so that's kind of also, we thought about moving it back further, but that also kind of keeps it out of sight in the location. She does have a porch off the back that she views out, so try to give her some space. Um, let's see, and then the the spacing behind the building, I they put six feet, I think it's a little bit greater to her shed and that's from my fence. Let's see what else. Um, and as far as the phasing, uh, I, we would initially like to do the two equine covers, we'd like to have them permitted. That's our primary um I guess that's our first thing we want to do. As far as the the other structure goes, we we asked for five years. Um, I don't expect to go anywhere near that. Part of that is my my career, my job. Whether or not I stay in this area past five years and so I would like to be able to do that. I'm, my career is somewhat kind of, I work at Diablo Canyon, so nobody knows what's really happening. So anyways, that that was for the five years for that, but we don't, I don't plan on going the full five years. I'd like to do it within two years. Are there any other questions I can maybe ask or answer?
Uh, any planning commissioners have questions of the applicant?
Now it's time to respond to the letter that was written by the neighbor or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that one too.
We'll get to that one. I just wanted to ask while he was on the phone. Go ahead.
Did you, uh, as the applicant, did you, is this Tim?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Tim, did did you have an opportunity to see the uh the letter from your your neighbors that was submitted to?
I, I have not.
Jeff, I wonder if we should read that letter first before we start discussing the um the other letters and maybe um if the applicant's finished doing testimony, we could read all the other public comments and then um, then talk about the the letter.
Yeah, let's do that. So.
Well, I only had one question, which was similar to the last hearing. It was around lighting for the exterior. Could you, Tim, ex- explain if there's any exterior lighting by the workshop there?
There is not currently planned uh lighting. Um, and if there were going to be lighting, it would be on the front side where the access is, I get on the south wall.
Okay.
All right, and and that, can you read the um letters into the record?
Yes, so the first letter here is from um Rick and Kathy Deraven, owners of the property at five zero zero five Casco Bell Road. And Sally Deraven, who has a life estate and a home of five zero one five Casco Bell Road, Which is part of the five zero zero five parcel. Sally Deraven has lived on this property since nineteen ninety-nine and Rick and Kathy Deraven. Since two thousand and six, permitting three accessory buildings in the small pasture immediately adjacent to their property. Will create noise, dust, aesthetic issues, a decline in property values and would be incon- inconsistent with the neighborhood. This is a zoning change in the guise of a CUP. Current zoning permits only two accessory buildings. This proposal seeks to allow four. Solar trellis, stable, storage and workshop, all close. To and plainly visible from our property, not counting the accessory dwelling unit already on the applicant's property. Too many buildings concentrated in one area will change the character of the area. Moreover, the proposed location would have the most adverse impact on us and the least impact on the applicant's residence. While the report states that the applicant's parcel is three point three acres, it does not highlight that at least half of the property is a steep hillside. And all three structures that are. That are the subject of this application are planned to be in a small pasture estimated. To be less than one half acre immediately adjacent to the resident at five zero one five. The report says the structures are behind the applicant's principal residence. But the principal residence is perpendicular to the street, meaning that the proposed structures are not blocked from you from view. By the principal residence that are between the residence and the five oh one five home. Visible from both our property and the street. The proposed workshop in particular should be denied. If not denied, the following conditions should be imposed. A, the commission should require it to be located either adjacent to the solar trellis. I E. On the far side of the pasture from the home of five zero one five Cascabel or. Preferably on the far side of the existing residence where the nearest neighbor was several several hundred feet away. As proposed, a five-foot set setback would simply be too close to the bedroom at five zero one five. B, metal structures are not the norm in this neighborhood. There are no conditions to limit noise, to require soundproofing of the workshop, to screen or to cite any openings away from the residence at. Five zero one five Cascabel. The board should not approve an unsoundproofed metal structure regardless of its location. C, approving a proposed substantial structure five years in advance is not appropriate. More importantly, approval should not grant flexibility to increase the proposed size of the workshop. Based on code amendments currently in process. In that event, we lose the right to object based on relevant conditions to what is actually planned to be built. Approval now would it, approval now would it would lock in a non-conforming structure. Without regard to conditions which may change over time. The second letter. Is from Darcy and Tim Wetzel, and it says, dear Tascara Planning Commission. One of the reasons we fell so in love with this property when we purchased it was because of the great breakup of the subdivision of parcels. It seemed that everyone in the neighborhood had their own great little piece of paradise to call their own. My husband and I were so excited to have our own little piece of land that we could raise our family on and live our everyday lives. I grew up as a kid on a large piece of property in Northern California. Where as a family, we owned cattle, horses and dogs. I have always dreamed. Of giving my own children a similar childhood experience and having the joy of raising and caring for animals. I believe animals teach children responsibility and the importance of hard work. I believe property and space to run teaches them about freedom and independence. We are asking you to allow us to use our own property to fulfill our simple needs by converting our existing structure into a storage facility. And allowing us to build a new animal shelter for our animals that is safe and secure. The structure would give our boys the opportunity to raise animals and enjoy the kind of life that we as their parents believe in. In the five years we have lived on the property, we have always been meticulous about keeping the property clean and organized. We are very responsible, hardworking people that take pride in the things that we own. We take very good care of our equipment and tools and wish to have a place to store them that is safe, secure and out of view from the street. We appreciate the recommendation of approval we have received from the staff. We now ask you to support in improving our property and allowing us. To do the improvements according to city ordinance and permit allowance. Please approve this conditional use permit. Thank you for your time, Darcy and Tim Wetzel, and that's all that we have.
Great, thank you. Dennis, before we get to any more questions, what I'd like to do is open it up for public comment and then we'll bring it back to. To discuss and ask questions at the time, okay? So.
Can you guys?
Uh Tim, before we move on, since this is part of public comment, do you do you have any responses to any of the? Comments that made by Rick and Kathy Deborah?
Yeah, I do. Um they made comments that they can see the structures. Well, my house is in direct sight. To them right now um. And they had made a comment as far as it devaluing our property. And right now, and I think you guys have photos of the existing ag structure that we have or the equine cover we put up. Um, we took a lot of pride in that, we stained every piece of wood and it is definitely an asset to the neighborhood and our the value of our home. And we plan on taking that same, you know, quality craftsmanship into the other structures um. So as far as the value, it's only going to increase the value of our parcel um. And the colors that we have chosen are very neutral, the shop or the. Structure will, the colors will match the house, it's not going to be an eyesore. It is also sh- uh shielded, there is a large oak tree where the branches on the north side of it. I would say come within three feet of the ground, and so you, from my neighbor's house to the north, from the front of her house, you can't even see this direction. Um, and there was also a comment made to the metal structures not. Uh that that there are not metal structures in our neighborhood. Uh, our neighbor to the north and west of us has a a larger metal shop. Um, the neighbors directly across the street have metal shops with metal siding. I'm sorry, it's a wood shop with a metal siding, and so that that comment was not accurate. And our property is three point two acres, and if you're looking at the site plan. Where the the animals have the whole back half, um where the where the equine covers are. Up to the top of the hill, that is where our animals um. Live, and so it they're not all the way to the street, they're up on the back half. And the location of the shop, it provides good access for us. It does, it does, it is partially shielded by my neighbor's shed that is right behind it. And there is a garage, so it is not like my neighbors have a view out of their living room into my shop or. Workshop, so um. That's kind of, kind of what I have to comment.
Okay, thank you, Tim uh. We'll invite others to make comments. It looks like we have one hand raised. Mariah, if you could let them in, Rick.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh I'd like to make, I guess, four points uh in addition to what was in my letter that was read into the record. Uh first, I think that one of the commissioners is mistaken about the amount of square footage. Um, it is more than fifty percent of the house right now because there's two structures. Of five hundred and seventy-six square feet, that's the equine and the storage. The workshop is proposed to be a thousand square feet, and then you've got the uh. Solar structure, which is about three hundred square feet, so you're talking twenty-four hundred square feet right now. Which is the current proposal. It's not less than fifty percent of the square footage of the house. Which I would be surprised if it's a thirty-two hundred square foot house. I was in it when the previous owners lived there. Uh and I don't think it's that big, but be that as it may. Second. Their plan is to completely change the character of the neighborhood. Because instead of a pasture which has been there since we've lived here and before, it's like a little industrial complex now. They're planning to add a gravel driveway and gravel parking area in the middle of these buildings. And three buildings in what was once a pasture. That's not rural, that's a little village right adjacent to our property. Third, the five oh one five house where my sister lives, the bedroom is on the pasture side of the house. The goats that they're currently having the in the building right now make a lot of noise, wake her up, keep her up. She can't keep her windows open because it's too close, so you're going to, for his convenience. Which is all he's so far tried to justify this for, you're putting a burden on us, and I don't think that's fair. Um, and I don't see why he doesn't propose, I guess I got a couple more things. When we s- when we, when he first started to put up a storage structure in February, and we had a discussion in his pasture. Uh it was going in a different location to what he's proposing to do now. And we asked him to move, he and he never mentioned a workshop, we asked him to move it to the far side of the pasture. Uh from our property behind his gazebo solar panel structure, uh and he said he wouldn't do it. Uh he also said that in terms of storage, what he wanted to store were things like his mower and horse food. And other uh implement and trailer, that doesn't sound like residential storage to me. So I I I think you need to think very carefully about the impact it will have on us. And if you're inclined to approve it, think very seriously about the conditions of approval. So that you don't adversely affect my sister, myself and my wife. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Rick. Any other comment or people in the on the panel that'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. We have a couple, looks like.
Next, we have Sally.
Oh.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I was hoping not to speak because I don't like to do things like this, but since I am the person that lives in the house closest to. The little village of metal buildings, I'd like to say a few words. Um, when I originally bought this property in nineteen ninety-nine. I bought it for the rural character of the neighborhood and Atascadero. I love to see the wildlife, I live where deer come every single day. You can hear wild turkeys, you can hear quail, you can see the stars at night, it's quiet, it's beautiful. I love a living year. And it seems to me, although I'm kind of a short timer, I haven't lived here. For fifty years, that when new people arrive, the first thing they want to do is fence their property immediately. Which limits the access the deer have, and I happen to like them. More and more deers get hit in the street. Um. I think what people do with their property is fine, but I I see a lack of regard. For neighbors these days that I don't really like. Uh, my bedroom is at the rear corner of the structure. And where the horses and goats live right now. Particularly the goats, it sounds like they're moving furniture at night and in the morning. I'm not sure what the goats do over there, but they make a. A lot of noise, so I'm grateful that they'll be moving a little further away. I would see the metal building, I have a very small storage shed, it didn't need a permit. Uh, I will see a metal building out my bedroom and bathroom windows. I I believe the metal building is too close, and I would also like to add that. I think there should be landscaping if the metal building is permitted too, and I don't believe it should be permitted. I I think. That Tim, they're shoving everything in the corner by my house. I have a lovely backyard. And right now, here what I hear is goats and uh kids and other noises. I think the structure could easily go over by his pool solar trellis. Um, I. I'd just like to say that it makes me sad, really, that the rural character of Atascadero is changing because I think a lot of people. Originally moved here to enjoy that, and I'm I'm sorry it's come to this with our neighbors, really. Uh thank you very much.
Thank you, Sally.
And it looks like we have one more on the phone, but I think that might be the applicant um. I'm not sure if if we can allow them to speak again or if you want to open that back up.
Um. Yeah, let's allow him to speak again.
Okay. All right, okay.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, I did have a conversation with my neighbors, Rick and Sally. Uh, I initially was going to put the the. The equine cover to the west of the one that's already built. Uh, this was back in February when this started. Uh, I had a discussion with them and they had expressed their concerns, so. Uh, I had stopped erecting it. Um, at that time. I did look into permitting and realized this stuff needs to get permitted, and that's when we started a refilling outage out at Diablo Canyon. So I had already started taking it down. Um, I had already pulled six posts out of the ground. And then, so that is why I proposed having the other equine cover closer to me. Uh, just in line aesthetically with the other cover. Um, and there was a comment made rural. Uh, it is very ruler rural, sorry. And what we are doing is it has a very country feel, it's not. A tin city, they are wood-sided, the shop will be a metal-sided, matching the color of my home. Um, and we did put a fence up because we had a deer problem. We had, I have a picture with over thirty deer in our back pasture. And we have dogs and we have kids, so it was a safety concern, and we also have horses which we keep up on the back. Um, so yes, that we do like the deer and although my neighbor feeds the deer, uh we have a deer problem. So that is, that is the reason for the house or for the fence. Um, and I feel that what we are proposing is. Very fitting with Atascadero and is very clean and professional looking um. It is and not an industrial tin city, it's a wood-sided, stained wood-sided, two buildings or two structures. Now, the shop is metal um, so I mean. That's, that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Tim. All right, uh any other comments from the attendees? If you want to raise your hand, this will be the last opportunity to do to make a comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to. And commission for discussion. Dennis. Unmute yourself too. Dennis.
Thank you, planning director. Um, does the conditional use permit carry with the property?
Yes, it does.
Um, yes. There seems to be, I mean, and listening to the discussion uh and. Even from the applicant, there's a lot of focus on what are going to consider the the immediate. And the animals and the children and the things that uh he enjoyed when he was young. Um, and then we have this building that's potentially five years out. Um, and and all that and. Five years is is a long time when it comes to kids, I mean, they change dramatically within five years of time. And so now, who knows what's going to be relative in five years, and even the applicant is saying he doesn't know if he'll be here in five years. Uh, I kind of. Agree with what Jason was leading into, which was, do we want to somewhat set a precedent? Of granting a phased plan for a period longer than the life of a conditional use permit. And that's where this building is falling in in into play. Um, the other side, and I might have been wrong about the square footage of things, but this all would go away with uh. Half of what the square footage of the house is said is sixteen hundred and twenty-five square feet. I mean, literally, I think they could avoid this entire discussion almost by putting one building that's sixteen hundred and. Square feet in size, instead of having four buildings. Um, so I'm kind of twisted in between, but I think bottom line. So I'm kind of twisted in between, but I think bottom line, I'm, I'm a little concerned about setting a precedent that we do allow for conditional use permits to extend beyond the 24 month period. At least if we do do that, then we require that an extension be applied for at some point. But again, I think things can change in, in two, three years. The building codes that Phil was talking about, the planning director was talking about, building codes, all the codes are amended every three years. And so we're at 219, so the next one is 222. We usually as a city or an agency doesn't adopt it immediately when the updates come. It usually takes a while for them to be adopted locally, but they do change. So those are my feelings right now.
The other planning commissions want to?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit confused on this one because it seems like the neighbor's contention here is based on that they like the rural feel and this person's trying to can build a conducive environment to be able to feed their horses and whatnot. And then there's complaints of, well, they're going to pave to this building and honestly, in this situation, I don't think there's really much of a way to make everyone happy. Where, where my concern is, is how much financial hardship are we putting over the applicant? And where does the neighbor's jurisdiction start and end on this? If we put in a requirement for them to reapply in two years, is that the $1,200 or is that like the four or 5,000?
So that would be the $1,200. They could reapply for a conditionally use permit to get the other building. And given, I think, some of the neighborhood opposition that we've heard today, that might be the best approach to suggest to the, to the applicant. In terms of your first question, what, what latitude do the neighbors have? They have the ability to provide the comments. They have the ability to appeal whatever decision the planning commission makes to the city council. There is an appeal before that. And that's really about it. I think it's definitely important to listen to the neighbors because they're the ones that live on the site. But it's also important to listen to the applicant and their needs too, and to look at the code as well. And what the code generally allows flexibility and look at the whole situation. It is a 3.2 acre site. It's a big site. It's on the rural west side. It's a Atascadero. You know, this is what Atascadero is made up of. It's made up of these agricultural related properties that have animals that have things going on and activities and kids and animals and but we have to look at making this, this use work in this location. A lot of this particular site unfortunately is very steep and sloped and that's why they're concentrating some uses close together. But this is a classic conditional use permit where they are asking for some exceptions for more buildings. We are hearing from the neighborhood. And we have to look at the whole situation carefully. I'll leave it at that and, and it's really up to the commission's discretion.
Jason?
I have a, I have a question regarding the goats because I know goats are really noisy. They just love to make noise and I'm, you know, the old adage is, you know, good fences make good neighbors. And, and this is almost the exact opposite, you know, good pastures make good neighbors. So what I'm looking at is, is the housing of the, the goats is going to be closer to the neighbor's house than to the main residence. And I would like to understand what the thinking of in the the applicant's mind is, is that to decrease the noise of the goats to the main residence? And kind of pass that on to the neighbor because I don't want to tell someone to do what to do with their property, but I would like to see the, a little bit more of a discussion between the neighbors and the applicant before I made a a hard decision on whether or not to make a conditional use permit, like Dennis was saying. If they change the format, they, they could do without this process. Just because it falls under the square footage, so. That's my two cents. I don't know if that's a question or more of a comment.
Jason, what? Phil, okay, so Phil, I have a question for you then. What's the allowable use for with animals? There's, there's no restriction on the site's property or what are any kind of restrictions as far as?
There are a number of restrictions that relate to animal density. So we have numbers of animals that are allowed per acreage on a site. And there's maintenance conditions that they need to keep the site in a decent manner. And there are setbacks in, in terms of how far away from the nearest residence on an adjacent property that you need to keep animals. So all of those things are in our code. And I think some of those things probably are mentioned in your staff report here and John could probably weigh in or Kelly on those particulars about that on this particular site. So those are governed separately than what they're asking for tonight. Tonight, we're not getting into animal density or how many animals they have. I don't believe we're getting to that level. What we're getting into is the fact that they're asking for multiple structures and they pay for use permit to get that approved. You know, we're stuck with that particular task. But you are also, you also do have the latitude to provide conditions, approve this, deny it, or, or the death that they yeah, limit the structures to what's allowable without a conditionally use permit, even though they've gone through the process already. We can't refund them at this point because we spent our money on the notification and the report and our hearings tonight, but yeah, you're at liberty to make the best decision based on what you heard.
Tori, you have your hand up first.
Yeah, um, I, I kind of feel like if what the applicant is proposing, I feel like it does fit the rural character. It's an equine structure. Horses belong in rural areas. I do also agree, I know that it's a financial burden, but I do feel like a two-year, 24-month conditional use permit is appropriate. I, I do recognize that doing that for more would set a precedent and I'm not sure that that's something that we want to do. I'd also like to point out that there are two sides to the property line. And if somebody doesn't like something that their neighbor is putting up, there's nothing to stop them from putting something on their property to block it. There's lots of trees and other things available. And I really, aside from perhaps putting up some, you know, shrubbery behind that, you know, a proposed workshop if he decides to put that up. I don't think that goats, horses or kids or a nicely stained wooden structure is going to change the, the what's the word, the, the neighborhood. I don't, I think that's what belongs in rural neighborhoods, so. That's, that's maybe my only condition is maybe putting up some kind of shrubbery behind the, the workshop to make it prettier. But other than that, I don't necessarily think that we can put many more limits on what he's going to do on his property other than the conditional use permit. So that's kind of my thoughts.
Thanks. Randy?
Um, just a question for staff. So I'm assuming in residential neighborhoods, there's probably noise ordinance as far as certain sound decibel you can't be over. Do we know if anyone's ever went out there with a sound decibel meter? Because I've dealt with cities where if you have a show going on, they'll go right out to the, the post right where it's all right, now we're at public. And if you're over certain decibels.
Yeah. And we do, we do have sound meters. We do do that from time to time when there's noise issues. Typically those noise violations come into form of, you know, if there's an issue with a significant machinery, there is significant continuous sound. The call of a goat is probably not going to come up as substantial. It's one of those things. It's kind of like, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of like the wild turkeys or it's kind of like the other things that are out there. It's, it's not that loud, but it's just kind of
Depends on the goat.
I want to, yeah.
It may not trigger a violation, but it can be annoying. I gotta admit, you know, I, you know. Yeah, I've heard that before and it's just like, oh. You know, my neighborhood, we've got, we've got mules and I can hear them because they echo up the canyon. And it's kind of funny because you can kind of hear their, their or maybe they're not mules, but they're actually donkeys. You can hear them.
Well, we are in Atascadero. We have, we have roosters that wake me up every single morning. Down barking for the neighbors, so.
There used to be a peacock in my neighborhood. Peacocks are the way, have you ever heard of peacocks? Oh, yeah.
I, I, I love goats. I have goats. They're my politically correct mulching machine. I throw it over the fence, they take care of it. It's the greatest thing. I'll, I'll say also where I live, 25, 30 years ago, someone abated a rooster with the noise ordinance in this, in, in my area. I'm interested in comments that Tori had made. I, I guess I'm wondering, are you interested in granting the, the structures that are being requested, but within a two-year period of time? Okay, thank you.
You know, I, I think for myself, I'm kind of at that same feeling that I don't want to set a precedent and extending out a SUP for too long. So, Randy, you have your hand up?
Yeah, can, can we pull a motion to amend that, make it to where we do a two-year requirement and do a vote on this?
Now, would somebody like to make a motion? Randy? Randy?
Yes, sorry, agreement with it. Yes, I would like to make a motion.
Yeah. With that other, well, you wanted to amend the condition though.
Yeah, I would like to make the, make it to where rather than extending it out and allowing a five-year oddity, we should probably put a two-year on it and have them reapply at the two-year mark.
Right, I meant, yeah. Well, not, not reapply, but apply for an extension.
Yes, exactly. Sorry about that.
Or do what they want. They might not want to do it in two years. It's their decision. They could build the house and the, I mean, the workshop in two years, or they could let it go. They can ask for the extension. They could move because the job has changed. A lot of things.
So, so do we have a second to Randy's motion?
I'll second it.
Do you have a second? Annette?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Nice chairperson, King?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Chairperson, Ben and Ica?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. Congratulations to the applicant. We'll we'll be able to get your, 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 your things going soon. Okay, we're going to move on then, close this, the public hearings and move into our director's report. Right, we have to know our director.
Phil just walked away.
There he is.
You thought you could get a glass of water.
Phil, I guess so. Phil, we're moving to our director's report and you just went away.
I'm here, I'm back. Sorry, I was distracted. I heard a noise. You know, I just saw a squirrel run across and I run off. Yeah. So our next hearing, two weeks from tonight, we are going to be looking at the big former Walmart property, the corner of Del Rio and El Camino Real. And it's the formal application for what's known as Del Rio Ranch, which is a tourism related project, basically I'll call it. It does have some lodging uses on it. It does have some recreational uses on it. It does have some commercial retail uses on it. There is room for a conference facility. There's also a an outdoor amphitheater on it. It's really an exciting project. It's really kind of a new trend. And so we'll be looking at that. It is not only a master plan of development, it's like a conditional use permit in a big way, but it's also an amendment to the Del Rio area specific plan. And there's an amendment to the general plan because they're moving some of the zoning designation around on the property to shift part of the residential area. So, big project. We will have just that item on, on the agenda and we're working on pulling that report together for you now and a lot of the background information. So it should be very interesting. It should be a good, a good discussion. So we hope we have a full contention of the commission. And I know that the applicant's excited to bring this forward.
Are we expecting a public reaction?
Well, we took this project to the design review committee and we didn't have the same level of public testimony as we saw with the Dove Creek project. There was a couple, two neighbors that weighed in, I think. And we had a couple of letters, but it has been fairly quiet. But I would expect that there will be some public testimony and folks, and folks weighing in, but nothing near the, the level I think that we saw with the, the two projects, the mini storage or the Dove Creek project at the design review committee.
How far did notices go out, Phil?
They typically go 300 foot, but in this particular case, it's a specific plan. So I think we went from, Kelly, if you want to weigh in, did we go from the boundary of the specific plan or are we going to do that? We also do a legal ad in a paper on, on these guys.
Yeah, I, I believe it went 300 feet from the entirety of the 26 acre property.
Well, there's just not as many people there. It's not very dense at all.
There's the freeway, there's the residence to the side.
What, what we, what we can do is we can send out, Annette, I think you're working on that tomorrow, right? We, we can increase our boundary and send it out at least 300 feet from the specific plan boundary. And then if you want additional noticing, we can do beyond that as well.
But our legal requirement is just 300 foot from the property boundary and then we do the legal ad in the paper and then we post notices.
Yeah, I think, I think in this case, it's actually 300 feet from the specific plan boundary since there's a modification, even touches this project site.
But yeah, there's not a high density housing area that directly adjacent to this that has a lot of people living there. So I think that's why we're hearing different levels. I mean, in the south end of town, when you've got the Dove Creek development and some high, and some high density other projects around that, you get your with one notice, you notice a lot of people in a very small area. Here, yeah, it's going to be different. No matter what we do, it's going to be a lower density of people and a lot of other commercial properties actually getting noticed. So you're likely to probably hear less public testimony, whether that's positive or negative testimony.
I saw this when it came to the city council months ago.
It's right, it did come to the city council.
It's exciting. It's pretty cool. I can't wait to see what people think about it.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I will not be here.
Oh my God, I have to run the meeting?
I will be, I will be in Boise visiting my mom. I haven't seen her for two years because of the pandemic, so.
Nice.
All right, I'll allow it.
That's a good excuse.
It's a Zoom meeting.
Good point, Jason, good point.
Look how red Jeff's turning now.
Do you really want to leave me in charge, Jeff?
Well, I guess I could attend.
Well, Jeff, that is up to you.
Electron, I'll have to get an electronic agenda.
Yeah, he won't have a public report.
You let us know what you like to do.
Okay.
Turned down.
Yeah, you know what? Actually, I'm not flying back until Wednesday, so I should be able to attend. I forgot we're So Phil, when can we get together in person again, starting June 15th or?
Well, you know, probably, yeah. I think what's going to happen, actually that's a good comment. Good thing you mentioned that because there is discussion of that now. The city council's talking about going into kind of a hybrid mode, which would be they're going to be in attendance. They're going to allow the public to be in attendance, but they're still going to allow for a remote option. So the people can sign in and watch and weigh in over the phone and have that all live. So kind of combine those two things together. And we might do the same thing with planning commission. But yeah, on or about June 15th, as the state eliminates the, the tier system and then at the same time, we anticipate the mask regulations will be shifting and being reduced and then we'll be a lot freer to be more flexible with public hearings and gatherings.
Has everyone been vaccinated?
Uh, that's
I, I have a concern about it just because I'm, I'm going to have a breastfeeding baby by like August, September, so. That could, that could change a lot for me.
That's a sensitive That's a sensitive topic amongst people, I've been vaccinated myself, but, um, you know, I can't really ask my staff to get vaccinated or if they have been vaccinated, it's. It's one of those weird things, you know, that we don't.
Isn't that the requirement of June fifteenth though, there's still, it's, it's not mask free in all situations, it's.
It's not, so.
Scenarios.
Yeah, so I mean, basically right now, the CDC is saying that, you know, you. Can be without a mask if you're fully vaccinated and you're indoors and in certain situations, but when you're traveling on an airplane or a train or a bus. Or public transportation or in a crowded area that you should still be there, but the state hasn't adopted those standards yet, so we're waiting for that to happen. And waiting to see how it all unfolds, I don't know, I'm just, um, I'm ready to get rid of the mask altogether, but.
My wife has conferences with the CDC every morning, so I get the loo down that night when she comes home.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, let us know about the options, because it. It could complicate things, but the hybrid seems.
Yeah.
Really awesome for attendance rates, if people are out of the area, quote unquote, you know, just an example.
There's a part of this that may just stick around forever, or if for a while at least, because of the fact that. It does make it easier for the public to weigh in and attend if they can call in live. Or they can be on a video live, or if an applicant can present remotely.
Yeah, civic engagement, I think, has increased because of this.
It really has, though it's interesting dynamic, so there's things we've learned from that. And, uh, you know, I, I kind of enjoyed it, I like to be at work during the day in my office and taking care of things. But to be honest, I kind of like this for myself. You know, to be home in the evening so that, you know, especially if I have a city council hearing, it goes on for five or six hours. You know, I'm not stuck there, um, in one chair with everyone staring at me.
Are you wearing coats?
Well, yeah, see, the whole thing is, I can turn off the camera. You know, I can walk around and stretch or whatever and, you know, it's like, oh, oh yeah, here I am, you know, but.
No, it's important for quality of life, you know, like we're, we're asking quite a bit hours throughout the day and the evening, yeah.
It goes on, but anyway, we are going to be back in person at some point this summer and it will be probably continue to be hybrid, it'll be optional for applicants probably and for the public. Uh, but I think it won't be optional for, for staff, um, and for those. Uh, council or commission members that want to be there, they can be there, but we're not going to, I don't think we're going to mandate it because there still will be. There'll be many folks, roughly half the population that aren't going to get vaccinated. And so, and they may have a discomfort about being in, in, in a public setting until this pandemic is truly over. So we can't mandate it.
Never going to be over.
Don't say that.
No, no, it's, it, it's like flu or anything else, it's not going to be over.
Well, it may not be over, but it should get to a spot where it becomes part of our normal life and we say, okay, we can deal with this, you know, right?
If people wash their hands more, I'm all for it.
Yeah.
I told my kids to just keep wearing masks because we haven't gotten colds in a year and it's been fantastic. I told them, I was like, if you want to keep wearing masks at school, I'm totally fine with that.
But you need to get a cold once in a while, just to kind of test that system.
Have you, have you had a kid with a cold? They're awful.
Yeah, plenty of.
Have you had a husband with a cold?
My wife is a fifth grade teacher, she brings home every imaginable cold. Over the years, we've had them.
Have you had a husband with a cold, Phil? Until you have a husband with a cold.
Have you had a wife?
I am the wife with the cold.
So have you had a wife? I always think that the cycle was great, the kids, the mom, the dad, kids, the mom, the dad.
Well, it's obvious we're craving connection.
Yes, clearly.
I'm looking forward to getting together again soon and seeing y'all in person, especially some that we haven't never even met in person.
Yeah, yeah, this is a good, that's a good point.
So, uh, okay, well. I'm ready to go get some dinner, I don't know if that interview, so I'm going to call this meeting to a close and we will reconvene on June first.
Can I give one update that's exciting? I'm just, it's regarding the city, it's not planning commission specific, but I guess I'm really excited as a volunteer committee member for the. Equality mural project that the AUPs for two murals out of the ten got approved for downtown Atascadero. So there'll be more rolling out, but it's going to really, I think, set a more welcoming tone and a vibrancy and art. Public art in the downtown and I'm just excited about it, people.
It's very exciting.
Cool.
Good job. Yeah.
I'd like to be part of that.
Thanks for sharing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we can go now.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, see you in a couple weeks.
See you in two weeks.
Bye.